The date is May 21st. Please join Councilman Pizzillo in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh heavenly Father, I ask that you provide wisdom and guide us to make good decisions for our community, that our decisions are fair and equitable. I also ask that you protect those serving here and throughout the world working to keep us safe. I ask you to provide safe passage home to all of those in attendance. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Pizzillo, I appreciate that. All right, and roll call? Councilman Laura Tano was not here this evening, so we need to excuse her, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Stiff and a second from Vice Mayor Campbell. All am here to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Well, tonight, we have two communication items. So the first one, I'm going to have to take part in. I'm going to read a proclamation recognizing Councilman Osborne for her 11 years of service as a city council member. So, we will go down there, Joanne, okay? Good evening, this is Jo, Councilwoman Joanne Osborne. As, well, let's see, whatever time we end tonight, right? In the military, we say you're gonna be a civilian. Yeah, okay. But, Joanne has done so much for our city, and we have been on Together so long on a council, and so we wanted to definitely recognize Joanne tonight. So, I'm gonna read this proclamation for you, Joanne. Whereas Councilmember Osborne has served diligently and admirably on the Goodyear City Council for 11 years, and has been actively engaged as a resident since 1988. Whereas prior to her service on the city council, Joanne was the past chair and dedicated member of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission for six years, and was a voice on numerous citizens advisory committees with the purpose of improving our city. Whereas Joanne represents the City of Goodyear on the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, and the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And whereas Joanne led the Maricopa Association of Governments Continuum of Care on Homelessness and Human Services Committee as the chair, as the vice chair, at the time of the recession, we remember those days, when services were tremendously vital to the families of our region. Whereas she served as a member of the National League of Cities Finance Administrative and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and advocated for the needs of the city at a federal level, we thank you for that. Whereas she is an esteemed graduate of Senior Executives in State and Local Government Program from Harvard University. Whereas Joanne demonstrates a deep commitment to the future of our youth by convening leaders in education to share best practices through building blocks to great schools, the annual summit, and by promoting the importance of reading in the elementary grade levels, by inspiring classrooms across our city to compete in an annual City Goodyear Reading Challenge. Whereas Joanne's status as a community leader, well, it has been recognized by many, and her great focus on creating a sense of community throughout the City of Goodyear, well, it has inspired the city's progress and reinforced the city's culture. Whereas Joanne, well, she is a champion of local small business owners and Goodyear business community as a whole, and her confidence in the future of our city further evidenced by choosing to relocate her family-owned and operated business, Osborne Julie, in Goodyear. Her unwavering passion to ensure policy decisions support the exceedingly high quality of life provided to the members of this community. Whereas, the City of Goodyear is forever grateful, Joanne, for your selfless service and to our community and region. So now, therefore be it resolved that I, Georgia Lord, the mayor of Goodyear, Arizona, do hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Joanne Osborne to the City of Goodyear, and thank her for her leadership and dedication to the community. It witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, to be affixed this 21st day of May, 2018. Congratulations. You're right, she deserved every clap. So, this is a council, I'm sending, giving you a clock, it says on there, you wanna read it?
Joanne Osborne, Councilmember, City of Goodyear, Arizona, 2007 to 2018.
And I hope you'll display that with great pride. And of course, then, we have this bouquet of flowers for you.
Wow.
Yeah, I know, this is from the council?
Thank you.
And the city.
Welcome.
Yes, you're welcome. Would you like to say something?
Absolutely. Thank you. So, first of all, Georgia, to my friend, my mentor, my other mother, my gratitude for your service to our city. You have been a true ambassador. If many you may not realize what an ambassador is, and she is it for the City of Goodyear. You've also shown us all how to be a team coach, and to hold us together, and especially during the ups and downs of life. So, thank you very much. I just, you know, I had some notes, and I have to keep myself on track, so I'll look at this occasionally. But, you know, first of all, it is truly my honor and my pleasure to get to be part of our wonderful city. As I have said over the years to people that, you know, where we are in Goodyear doesn't happen everywhere, because we are the pioneers of our city. The fact that we only are about 12% built out, we have a long way to go. And so everyone in here, and in all these years, are adding to the makeup and the foundation of the city, and that's pretty exciting, so I thank you for all that. I think, I thank the staff. We have been so fortunate for all the years of great talented people within the City of Goodyear. You know, you're ones that have come to us, that have different cities, different states, and we're honored to have you in Goodyear. When my husband and I first opened up our store, it was in 1996, and my daughter over there was six months old, and she just graduated from U of A last week, and so, we've had some time here, we've seen some change. When we came here, there was only 13,000 people. When I got on planning and zoning, now this is what's kinda funny, in 96, there was 13,000. In 2001, there was 21,000, and that's when I got on P&amp;Z. From 2001 to today, we're now at 84,000. We've seen some tremendous, tremendous growth, and we've gone through good and bad times. Everybody that's here, I ask you to continue to tell the Goodyear story, because you know what? You're gonna reach someone that could be our next citizen, our next employee, our next business owner, it could be our next council member. And that's what happened to me, because when we had our store in Phoenix, we never saw the city people, we never talked to anybody, but when we opened up here, I actually had a council member, Seth Kaner, started becoming my friend, and he said, "You know what? You're a mom, you're an Arizona native, you're a business owner, we could use you on P&amp;Z." Well, I applied, and I was turned down. And then, the first Citizens Goodyear Police Academy started up, and I went and I was part of it. And I was in there with Mayor Arnold, I was in there with Jim Keen, Sr., I was in there with all these other people and business owners, and I felt so timid. I was like, "Oh my gosh, why am I here? Who am I? What, why do they want me here?" But it was exciting to start to learn. And then I applied again for P&amp;Z, and I got on that time, and I was in the all-mens club, and I was the only girl. And so, you know, yeah, I did bring some perspectives they weren't thinking about, and covering tot lots in the parks, things like that. So, we all do make a difference in what we put our hearts and our minds to, and as we grow, we learn things, and then we realize how that affects this, and you start to look holistically at everything. Well, as a leader, you also start to realize where there's work to be done, and I think 17 years between P&amp;Z and city council, I've put my fingerprints on this city, and I'm very proud of it. But as a family person that generations ago came to Arizona in the 1800s, I watch our state, and I see where work needs to be done, I see where water is critical right now in our conversations and the plans we need to make. I see education in these last few years of where funding and our teachers got out and started walking because they knew something needed to change. Well, I'm ready to be part of that. But I take all of you with me, I take all these experiences, everything I've learned, and I thank you for your time. Obviously, I'm still gonna be around, and we have a building that's not going anywhere. So, I appreciate it, but to my team back here, we have been very blessed to have a council that allows each person to have that thing that gets them riled up, and not to put them down for it. You know, we each have those pieces that, you know, they all know, I don't like homes against freeway. We all have those kinds of quirks that, you know what? It's just something that we stand for. And we can be in disagreement, and that's okay, because we're still friends and we still, you know, back each other up. You know, Bill, I appreciate all of your ability for great strategy, and for thinking how one thing affects the other, and your ability to, a lot of times, talk in layman's terms but are very specific to points that need to be addressed. Jo, your ability to see finances and budget, and the fact that you have this incredible humor, and are always looking at the bright side, I appreciate that, what you bring to the council. Wally, you have been truly a community spirit, and is always out there wanting to help, and watching you and the amount of people that you remember names, and you remember what they do, and you just make people feel welcome, I really appreciate that. And Mr. Brannon, you are the person that I see as the future, the future family guy of Goodyear, and a business mindset that will help us grow, and, you know, our ninja warrior here, I think will also bring some health and wellness, you know, thoughts to how our city grows, and so that's all very important. And lastly, just to our citizens, you know, I thank you, I've done this all for you, and I hope that there's things you're not all probably happy to be at me over, but everything we do here is in the best interest of you, so I thank you. Oh, I forgot my husband.
How about the husband standing up and taking a bow with her daughter? Come on, come on, come on, stand up, you got the grandson, we appreciate, this is a family affair. Oh, and the son's here, everybody, yes. All right, we're on to the next item, 4.2. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, see? Boy, they grew. Yes, who would like to be first? Bill. Okay.
I'm either first or last, I guess, but, no, it's been, it's been a very interesting ride, Joanne, over the years, as, you know, I think back to when we first really met in preparation for my first council run, and some of the gentle advice that you gave, and I'm just amazed at how close we've become professionally, obviously, but also on a personal level. I really appreciate our conversations, I'm gonna miss those, and I know that your endeavor into the next step, or the next phase of political life is, you're gonna give it all you got, and I've never met anybody with as big a heart for their area that they're at or public service than you, so I'm hoping that big heart wins at the ballot box, but nevertheless, you certainly have, you know, encouraged each one of us to do better, so I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you.
Jo?
Keep those one liner music, movie quotes keep coming, all right? But you're right, it's been a pleasure working with you, and again, I think the key on this council's always been, we come from different perspectives, but we all treat ourselves very professionally, we all allow each of us to have our own views, and we come to a consensus most of the time, and that's what I think is really great. You've been really a great part of this team, I'm gonna miss you, and I'll find a quote later to ship to you, as far as that goes. But again, always look at the bright side, you always have that passion, and I know you will continue to serve and continue to bring the concerns of the residents at the next level. And that's, to me, is what's missing in today, period. You look at others that say they are, but in my humble opinion, aren't, and I know you will do that, so again, good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Wally?
Well, Joanne, you've been an inspiration to all of us, and we've really enjoyed working with you, and we wanna say thank you for being a part of Team Goodyear, but we expect wonderful things out of you, and you have all of our support, and we love you.
Thank you. I know Sherri would wanna say something if she was here, and I know she probably will send something to you as a thank you for all your service, I'll turn it over to Brannon.
Yeah, so I just wanna say thank you as well, I appreciate your commitment to the city, 17 years, it's been great, so thank you so much for your dedicated service, for the mentorship, and for, I know you love the city, so I know you truly care about it, so I appreciate that too, it definitely shows, and I'm looking forward to you as you keep moving forward, and forward and forward, and, yeah, I just wish, it's been a pleasure working with you, I've only been on the council for a year, but I've appreciated, yeah, talking to you and the mentorship, and just being a part of the Team Goodyear, and helping move the city forward, so, so thank you, and I'm, like I said, I'm excited for your next steps.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
And lastly, Joanne, I've known you for a long time, right from the beginning, I was on council, you were on the planning and zoning, and then you came on to council, so we've been friends and associates and teammates for a long, long time. But I will have to tell you, Joanne, you've grown. You have grown, your philosophy, your knowledge, your interaction with the public, your decision-making, there's been a great change through the years, and it was all for your development. You finally have, you keep moving up that ladder, and so I congratulate, whatever happens in your future, I'm hoping, I have a hope for your, what your future's going to be, we all need that, and we have decided we need that, and so we wish you well, and we thank you for having your business in Goodyear and your family. And you have, I don't know if anybody knows this, but you and your company, your husband company, you give financially a lot to this community of Goodyear and to other communities. I don't know if anybody, so you don't just invest your time, you've invested your money, and so, and that's always difficult for most families, so we appreciate that. And you will be missed, and I'm sure you're gonna miss our, we have a little ying and yang, we have arguments once in a while on the phone. We go back on the phone together, or behind the scenes or something like that, because we're very honest with each other. Yeah, so, and I shall miss that, I'm hoping the next person that comes, I can be the same way, so I need someone like that, we can talk back and forth. So anyway, we wish you well.
Thank you.
So, we have a council meeting to go, to finish tonight, so we better get on with it, all right? So the next item is another very honorable one, and I'm looking forward to this, is the staff will recognize Deputy City, Deputy Chief Paul, I'm sorry, Police Paul Marzocca. I was gonna say that right, for once I had pronounced the name correctly, and I missed it again. Farewell from the city and his selection as the El Mirage Chief of Police. So Jerry Guyer, our Chief of Police, is going to make that introduction. Jerry?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to honor another one of our City of Goodyear family. One of the greatest rewards that any of us in leadership can have is when our staff members are selected to lead other agencies. It reflects favorably on the city, favorably on the department, to know that another municipality sees the professionalism, the integrity, and the leadership in our employees to bring them in as one of their department heads, especially the Chief of Police. Goodyear Deputy Police Chief Paul Marzocca has worked for the Police Department in Goodyear for 22 years. During that time, he served at the rank of Sergeant, Lieutenant, Commander, and up until last Friday, was one of two deputy chiefs at the Police Department. During his tenure, Paul has received many awards and commendations, the most prestigious being his attendance and completion of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. Tonight, we wanna say farewell to Paul, not goodbye, just farewell, he's not going too far, as you mentioned, he has been selected as the new police chief for the City of El Mirage, where he started his new position today, and to note, he also started his police career in El Mirage 23 years ago.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So I know Paul would like to say a few words to the Mayor and Council, so Paul, congratulations, great job, come on up.
These are allergies, not tears.
Okay, all right.
This is tough for me. I really appreciated my time here in Goodyear. I love the City of Goodyear, and what everyone has brought to me in the opportunities that Goodyear has given. You know, I wanted to be a police officer since the age of four, like my dad, and he's proud of me for what I've accomplished in this time, you know, and just saying to council, thank you very much to my past leaders, Peter Nick, Mark Brown, especially Jerry Guyer, to my family, Michelle, my wife, Jackie, my oldest, Megan, and Nina, I really appreciate for everything you sacrificed for me, because in public safety, we give up a lot of birthdays, holidays, and other events that we just can't make it to, because the sacrifice we make to the citizens of the citizens of Goodyear. So, I wanna tell you, it was all worth it, the ride was good, and I'm gonna take everything I learned in Goodyear, because we have the secret sauce here in Goodyear. Our employees and people want to work for Goodyear. We are the best police department, and I wanna bring that forward to El Mirage. And so, with that, I wanna thank the citizens and all of you here tonight, and everyone else, so thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere, Bill'll give you one more round of applause. So I, I know council wants to verbally congratulate you, so we'll start out with Councilman Stiff.
I thought for sure it was going the other way. You know, the irony is, Paul and I crossed paths on the street at times when I worked for the fire department, and it was astonishing the relationship that the Goodyear Fire Department and the Police Department had when I first got here in 2001, and that has always carried through, and it was not a mandate from anybody, it was because of the people that were involved. And Paul, it was always a pleasure to work with you, both in the field and in my role here as a council member. I wish you nothing but great success, I know you'll do very well, and you have a big pool to reach back to for help if you need anything, so congratulations, and look forward to seeing you.
Councilman Pizzillo?
I too, known you, Paul, since I worked for the city many, many, many years ago. Now, it's almost been, I've been on the council more than I actually worked for the city. But, but again, I know you're gonna do great, they made a great selection, and I wish you well, I really do, take care.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I hate to tell you goodbye, so I'm not gonna say goodbye, because I'm gonna come find you. I've already found out that one of our residents went looking for you at El Mirage last week to say congratulations, and you weren't there yet. We're just so happy for you, Paul, you've come up from the ranks, you started with us, you have been a wonderful officer, you've taken such great care of the residents, and we all appreciate it, and you deserve this promotion. El Mirage is very lucky to have someone of your caliber to lead their officers, you're a wonderful role model for them, and you just, it's just a wonderful thing for you and your family, and we're gonna miss you, but we know you're not very far, and like Bill and Jo said, you can call us and certainly check in with the chief anytime you need help.
Thank you.
Uh, chief, sure. But anyway, best wishes to you, Paul, you're gonna be very successful, and we're very happy for you.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Well, you know, I'm gonna have to say thank you as a citizen, as a business owner, and as a council member, because you've been there through the whole time that I've been here, and I appreciate your sacrifices to keep us safe, and being a family man, and I congratulate you for, you know, kinda hitting your pinnacle of getting to be a chief, but I'm glad that you're still local, you're still gonna be around here, and that's a good feeling, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank you as well, I've only been on the council for a year, but I appreciate your dedicated years of service here in Goodyear, and one of the reasons residents come to Goodyear is because of how well-run the Police Department is, so I thank you for your years of service, and leaving your mark on the department and on the city, and like everybody else, I look forward to your time as you go to El Mirage, and we'll see you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, just a second, I'll do that. I just wanna say that I'm so pleased you're gonna go help Mayor Mook. We are good friends, and she needs a friend, and she needs a good police chief, and you're all of that, and so, I can't tell you how pleased I am, and I'll be hearing about you, because we do talk among the mayors, you know? We meet for breakfast and dinner, so we keep up on our employees that are going to other cities, so we look forward to that. Before you go, though, you know, it's just like the military, and I think police and the fire, the spouses are the ones sometimes that take some of the sacrifices and don't get the thank yous, so would you introduce your wife and who else you have here this evening?
I surely will. My wife, who wanted to stay in the back, Michelle, and my daughter Nina.
Okay, all right. Well, spouses are used to staying in the back, but we gotta start bringing them forward so that the public realize just how much, how many sacrifices they make, all right? Thank you so much, and we'll be seeing you around.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any cards? No, Mayor Lord. Does anybody want to speak? All right, then we're just going to get on with it. So, would the deputy city clerk please read consent agenda item 6.1 to 6.6 by title only, please?
6.1, approval of minutes from the special meeting held on May 7, 2018. 6.2, approval of fiscal year 18 budget transfers. 6.3, renewal of the IGA with the Superior Court of Maricopa County for jury services. 6.4, council subcommittee appointments. 6.5, council appointments to the Community Development Advisory Committee. 6.6, regarding the development and fire services agreement between the City of Goodyear, NNP3 Estrella Mountain Ranch LLC, and AV Homes of Arizona, adopt resolution number 2018-1875, authorizing and directing the execution of the Second Amendment to the Development and Fire Services Agreement, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and Second Amendment, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Does the public wish to be moving on from the consent agenda? Does council wish to remove an item from consent agenda? Then could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. We're down to business, I'd like to remind council, once more, to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there's a motion on the table. All right, we'll go to the first item, 7.1 on business, is consider adopting the recreational campus master plan. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, Walt Kinsler, Capital Improvement Plan Manager, will present it, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council, we are excited to present the Recreation Campus Master Plan for your consideration, approval consideration this evening. Before we get started, I would like to introduce Walt Kinsler, Goodyear's Capital Improvement Program Manager, and also Sean Wasney, he's with Kim Lee Horn. We're fortunate to have Kim Lee Horn work with us on this master plan and this project. In addition, we are also joined by members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. We have Commissioners Raquel Landfield, Kim Harris, and Jerry Wilson, if I can have them stand and be recognized. If I can have them stand and be recognized? The Parks and Recreation Commission also, um, at their last meeting voted unanimously in favor and in support of the master plan before you this evening, uh, for your approval consideration. Um, but before we get started, uh, so why do we master plan? Uh, the primary reason is to ensure that the plan aligns with the community needs. Um, we know that, uh, parks that are aligned with community needs are parks that are used. And thus, uh, the city receives maximum return on investment, um, uh, by providing their service. Um, so that's, that's the primary reason why we master plan. Uh, but another reason why we master plan is, uh, to gather details needed to properly scope the project, um, which allows for the ability to obtain accurate costing information as well as related construction and operational costs. Um, and that's the phase that we will advance to next, uh, that Walt will be discussing. So how do we get here? The Parks and Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan was adopted by City Council in 2014. Uh, the plan identified, um, some specific needs, uh, for central Goodyear. Um, the plan called for two 30-acre community parks, an aquatics facility, a 30,000-square-foot recreation facility, um, as well as walking paths and trails. It's also important to note that, uh, providing parks and recreational opportunities are the top two funding priorities for our residents, and that's per the citizen survey that's conducted each, uh, every couple of years. The plan being presented this evening, um, basically culminates 1,100 touches with community members and various stakeholders and 10 months of planning. Lot goes into creating a master plan. And if you look at the graphic in front of you, um, it really represents the center being the master plan and all of the various inputs, which are basically spokes of the will. All this information goes in to create, uh, the perfect plan. Public outreach efforts, um, individual interviews with City Council and listening to those vision, uh, visionary, um, ideas. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan, uh, feeds into, um, this recreational master plan, uh, the 2025 plan. We met with, uh, tons of stakeholder groups throughout this process. We met with, um, stakeholder groups such as Desert Edge High School, which we didn't just meet with their administrators, we actually did a planning exercise with 50 other youth government leaders on campus. That was probably the best exercise that, that I've been involved in, uh, throughout my career. But we also met with, um, with Basin School. We met with the local HOAs that are surrounding the park area. Um, and we met with swimming groups, little league groups, uh, you name it, we met with them. Uh, we included not only the Parks and Recreation Commission, but we also touched the Arts and Culture Commission and the Youth Commission. Um, so a, a vast amount of, of public outreach went into creating this plan and I'm, I'm very proud of that. And with that, we're unveiling the master plan before you today. The area of focus is the eastern 40 acres. The remaining 46 acres, um, are, are there for just illustrative purposes. Tonight, you'll be, uh, adopting the master plan, the eastern 40. And, uh, that includes the 30-acre community park, the aquatics center, and the recreation center. So you can see, we're checking those boxes off that, uh, were priorities for us from our earlier, uh, community plans. Um, and so with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Sean Wozni with Kim Lee Horn to highlight the master plan before you this evening.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, as Nathan spoke about, we're gonna focus on the east half of the, the master plan, so the 30-acre park and then the 10 acres that has the recreation center and the aquatics facility on it. So the park amenities, uh, as we look at the northeast corner, we start to look at the, uh, positioning for the recreation center, the aquatics facility. We have a multi-use plaza. Uh, one of the key emphasis on the plan was to make sure we had multi-use areas. So we wanted to have functionality between, uh, all facets of the park. So, uh, certain elements that could be incorporated in that multi-use plaza, as you kinda come down from the recreation center down into the kinda the core element of the park, uh, could accommodate, uh, art walks, um, uh, food trucks, you could have, uh, art festivals, uh, farmers markets, so different kind of activities. It can also, we have a, uh, kind of a small, uh, amphitheater that can, that goes out towards the, uh, multi-use, uh, fields that could be used as a larger type, um, stage for larger events. And then it could also turn the other way and we could have a smaller intimate gathering, um, on the multi-use plaza area. We also have two softball, baseball fields. We have a playground. We have a group ramada, uh, that could have picnicking and barbecuing. We have, uh, two tennis courts, two sand volleyball courts, uh, six pickleball courts, and then, uh, two basketball courts as well. Um, we also have, again, the multi-use rec fields. Those could accommodate anything from, uh, football, soccer, lacrosse, any type of multi, uh, rectangular-type field sport, so very versatile there. Um, and then the distributed parking. We wanted to make sure, one of the things we did here was having, uh, parking that was distributed among the amenities, so you could have different types of activities occurring at the same time. We also have off-site improvements along Harrison, which will be a half-street. We'll have another half-street improvement on Estrella and a, a signal at Estrella and Harrison. And then one of the other elements, uh, was asked last time we presented, um, was, was the multi-use path. So throughout the park, you have a purple set of network here. Uh, it'll be a hardscape, so it's a concrete path, all-weather surface that would be, uh, approximately about a mile's worth of path around the entire 30 acres, so within and around the, the park area there. We also want to make sure we're gonna start to look at the connection to Wildflower as we come in from, uh, the west to get over to the east. It's a very important connection. We wanna make sure we have that. That was certainly one of our most important neighbors and, and one of the, the largest outreaches, uh, part, definitely part of several out, outreach opportunities as well. We're also gonna look at the recreation center and aquatics layout. So this is back in the northeast corner. We have, as part of the recreation, uh, center, we have a 30,000-square-foot building. It has a multipurpose gymnasium, locker rooms. It has three multipurpose, uh, classroom spaces, activity spaces. Those could be anything from an art class to an exercise class, um, just very versatile. The larger ones, there's two independent ones, those are about 1,000 square feet. The larger one's about 2,000 square feet, and that could be for a banquet. It can open up. There's a covered patio as you go down to the, um, further down, there's an activity lawn as well. Um, we have the a, admin area and then various storage areas throughout that building. As we start to look at the expansion opportunities, we start to look at a, a second level. So the multipurpose gymnasium would be built to its ultimate volume, so that would be at its maximum height. When, within that, we identified four areas that could be expand the property, uh, the recreation center footprint. So we could go anywhere from a 30,000 up to a 52,000, um, at full build-out. And that includes, uh, we have identified three areas. Area A, which would be the expansion in terms of the, uh, elevated walking track. Area B and C, which are additional multipurpose, uh, rooms that could be built up over, um, existing classroom, multipurpose rooms and the admin area. And then Area D, which would be an external area that could be built up, that could be, uh, a kind of an external building, that could be another gym or multipurpose area as well. Um, as you look at the aquatics facility, that's, um, you have the competition pool, 25-yard pool, uh, eight lane. We have an activity pool, which would have potentially a, a lazy river component, a zero-depth, uh, entry kinda activity pool. It could have some splash elements, um, different, uh, amenities for that, and then a slide as well. We'd have, uh, ramadas and shade structures throughout. One of the big elements we did here was, was, uh, shade for the, the users as well. And so with that, we're gonna show you a, a video that really comprises what this process was about. It was about the community shaping this part.
Thank you.
With the sound.
Yeah.
Thank you. And now we'll have, uh, the, uh, senior project manager, um, or CIP ma, manager, uh, talk about next steps.
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Walt Kinsler. Uh, I was the senior project manager on the master plan, uh, for the last 10 months. About January, I was promoted to the CIP manager. So I'm, I'm coming to you wearing two hats. What I'd like to do is, uh, go through our steps that we'll be taking to get that beautiful animated flyover that we just witnessed, uh, to reality, where people will be out there playing in the park. Uh, we have already begun our rezoning and site plan approval process. Uh, we'll be working with Development Services and Planning. Uh, that is about a 90-day process. That should be completed, uh, later this fall. And then, uh, our real strong emphasis is going to be on completing the preliminary project cost analysis. And that is, uh, where we are going to engage a construction manager at risk, a contractor, who will help us, working together with city staff and our design team at Kim Lee Horn, to break down each of the project components and look at, uh, the functionality of each of those components. Look at how construction can be sequenced to be most effective and efficient, uh, for the six different projects that will be, uh, under construction. Uh, just a reminder, the six projects would be the Recreation Center, the Aquatics Center, the, uh, uh, Community Park, the two, uh, road improvements, half-street improvements, one Harrison and Estrella, and then the RID relocation facilities. So the construction manager at risk, the general contractor, has engaged, uh, commercial pool builder, uh, building, uh, contractor, heavy civil contractor, and large site contractor to help us really get deep into the different aspects of those features and get together some very good costs. We all know that the, the volatility and the construction market's a bit unstable. As part of our pause for the entire CIP program, this is one of the steps that we're taking. Uh, as a city, we're taking a step back and looking at the entire program and, and we really wanna get a better handle on these costs, uh, so that when we're presenting projects with a budget, we know that we can build what we're presenting. So for the next three and a half months, that's what we'll be doing, uh, developing those costs. And then, as part of the overall CIP program, we'll present that to Council, uh, for, for their input. The other four items are kinda pending on how that cost analysis comes out. But, uh, we would like to engage our design consultant to develop plans, which would include those six features that I talked about, uh, and, and have those plans ready so that we can start, uh, designing, which will take a 12-month period. Uh, that is the top of the right-hand, uh, row there. That's a 12-month period for design. We'll have, uh, design permitting. In addition, the cons, the contractor that we're engaged with will have an opportunity to look at possibly doing some early procurement of, uh, features, uh, maybe to get in front of some of the escalating costs, uh, maybe, uh, in front of some of the tariffs that, that are pending or could happen, uh, as well as, uh, coordinating the construction sequencing to find out, uh, and, and identify the best way to approach the design, uh, in terms of the construction costs. The, uh, construction should take 12 months and we are looking at a late fall 2020, uh, grand opening. That'll turn it back over to Nathan.
Well, thank you very much.
And with that, Mayor and Council, we'll answer any questions as we ask for your consideration on approving, uh, the master plan, uh, on the screen today, specifically the east 40 acres.
All right. Who would like to start? Councilman Vazillo. What? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, that would be good, wouldn't it? Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody like to speak? All right, then I'd like a second, a, a motion and a second to adopt the Goodyear Recreation Campus Master Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Vazillo. Open for council discussion. Thank you, Council. Councilman Vazillo.
First of all, I really appreciate this process as it's gone all the way through. Saw when we had the block party, um, all the input from the outside. Uh, this is not new to, to us as this comes through. And again, a lot of efforts gone in there to get buy-in from the community, and I think the final product is great. So I'm looking forward to this thing opening up in, what is it, fall 20? 20? Yes.
Councilman Stip.
Thank you.
Nathan, to you and the entire team, I wanna say thanks. This is probably one of the, um, most desired, uh, things that our residents, especially living in central Goodyear, have said, "We need something to do here in the middle of the city." And, uh, and I'm, I'm ecstatic that we're able to finally get it, get it done, get, get started. Of course, I want it done by the end of 19 and not 20, but, um, you know, I know you guys will, will do the right thing and, and, uh, provide the, uh, the best product that we absolutely can. So I'm very excited about it and kudos to you and everybody for getting it done.
Thank you. If, if I can respond to that, uh, you know, there's, uh, certainly, uh, Mayor, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. There is a, a great deal of excitement in moving this project along, but I can't overemphasize the importance of the pause and the step that we're involved in now to make sure that we are costed appropriately and go through that, that effort, um, so, um, that we go into this fully, fully informed, so, um, but thank you for that comment.
Councilman Hampton.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate, I, I also am very excited about this, this park as well, this project, being involved in the, in the public input process, having my kids involved and, and also all the, the people on the committees. And yeah, it's been a lot of good input and it speaks for itself. I think it's gonna be a great park. And, I mean, I live south of freeway and I'm, I'm really excited about it. I know all my neighbors and friends are very excited about this park. So it'll be a great amenity for the citizens and great amenity for the, the residents and people in the area that wanna come and, and have things to do. So I, I appreciate all the hard work and I'm looking forward to it becoming a reality. That video is, uh, I, I wanna be in that video. I wanna be there. So, so thank you very much.
Councilman Osborne.
Thank you. You know, um, it's kinda coincidence that I get to vote on this tonight, because in 98, when my husband and I actually moved to Goodyear, we moved to Wildflower Ranch. And, um, we've waited a long time for this park. And so it's, it's exciting that this is coming. Wildflower's waited a long time, but the whole city has really been excited about this, this product. And, you know, you guys have done it just exactly the right way you should do it. You've gotten everybody involved, different groups, you know, our, our different committees, and yet, all of- and yet, all of our citizens that wanted to be a part, the kids, you know, everybody can feel like this is part of mine. I touched this. This is, I got to be part of this. And the fact that you've been out going to different areas to showcase this and ask questions, people realize, oh, this is real now. It's really going to happen. And yes, we would love to have it sooner than later, but, you know what? I appreciate the way you've done it. I appreciate, everybody's been saying it, the pause, to make sure that we're financially doing it the right way. And so, good job. Good job to everybody that was part of it. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Well, Nathan, I really have to tell you that this master plan exercise that we just went through, I felt was the best one that I have been involved in since 2000. I was involved in the Community Park master planning as a public member. I was involved in the Australia one as a public member. But this one, I really felt that you, your staff, and everyone involved in putting this together listened to the residents and had them take an active part. And for that, I thank you, because this is their park. We're paying for it, and they need to enjoy it, and we should have as much of the amenities that they want and provide that if we possibly can. I appreciate you taking a step back, because I am anxiously awaiting you to come back and tell us, almost to the pity, how much this is going to cost, so that we can make the determination whether to build it completely for the rec center and the aquatics pool, or what the perimeters are. And I know how the construction prices are changing daily, and I appreciate you doing that. But we're all excited about it. It will be the absolute jewel of this city. So thank you all, everyone involved. We appreciate it. We know how hard you've worked, because this is really a labor of love for the city. So thank you.
Well, I'm thrilled. I feel like the City Center Committee people that made all those sacrifices and was on that for so long, we have some action being taken. It happens to be the parked area. But it's probably an area that really is more influential on our citizens and more useful. I really do like the three-and-a-half-month pause you're going to make. I like the idea that you're going to, you know, look at the design consultant in 12 months. I think that's smart, and the early procurement. It's nice if we find that there are things, we buy them early on, that will save us rather than sequencing at the end of it. So I think you're really looking at this as smart, smart. So we appreciate that, and you really have answered all the anxiety I think council has had through this process. We want it. And there's a lot of things we've sent pictures to you that we wanted to have. So I think we're feeling a little bit more secure and responsible in how we're presenting this. So, great job. Thank you all. Round of applause for that, huh? So we're going to vote for this. All right? So we did the motion. Checking myself, because I'm getting involved in the substance tonight, and I don't want to have to worry of all this trivia here on voting it. So here we go. We've done the discussion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. Great presentation. All right, 7.3 on the business, to consider approving the Pebble Creek Phase 2, Unit 60.
Mayor, 7.2.
All right, I didn't do something right.
The lease agreement with Treasures.
Oh, 7.2, I'm sorry. Boy, I tell you what, I'm not on tonight, am I? All right, 7.2, to consider the lease agreement with Treasure for Teachers for temporary use of the Ballpark Team Shop. Bruce Kessman, and that's not who's here, Guy Lanes before us, Ozlinski from Arts and Culture Coordinator. Is Bruce going to come up later or not? Just you tonight?
I will present, but if we have any questions at the end, Bruce will be available to answer this.
All right, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This evening, we are seeking council approval to lease the Goodyear Ballpark Team Shop to a nonprofit organization, Treasure for Teachers, from July 6th to August 4th. In my brief presentation, I'd like to share a little history with you of how we became connected with Treasures for Teachers and their organization, as well as the community benefits for bringing this resource to our city, and some highlights from the lease. So for the past five or six years, we have been supporting the West Valley Arts Council. Every summer, they do an art supply drive. And what they do is they collect supplies from other artists, from partners in the city and the West Valley, so that they can gather those supplies and then distribute them to our local art teachers. As the years go on, they find the need has been growing, and they just don't have the capacity to get enough supplies out to everyone that is requesting supplies. And so, they've started looking for a solution. And that solution came in the way of the nonprofit organization, Treasures for Teachers. Treasures for Teachers is based out of Tempe. They have a 12,000-square-foot facility there that's a warehouse. They call it a creative reuse center. And what they do is they have a shop, they're a retail space, that teachers pay a $35 annual membership fee, and they're able to come in there and get free supplies and low-cost supplies to use for their classroom. And the way they get these supplies, it's like surplus supplies. They partner with people like Motorola, Intel, the NFL, all these organizations. They make donations to Treasures for Teachers, so that these supplies are there and available for the teachers to use. One of the issues they found is our West Valley educators. To get to Tempe, to the facility when it's open, it's quite a drive for them. And so, they don't utilize it as much as the East Valley teachers do. So for this reason, we wanted to explore a way to get Treasures for Teachers out to the West Valley, so our West Valley educators can reap the rewards of what they offer. So as we began to research this, and we started looking at the data, we found that 91% of Arizona educators spend their own money to provide supplies for their classroom. That's on average about $540 per teacher that they spend. Some teachers spend up into the thousands of dollars for their classroom. Additionally, families, when they send their kids back to school, they're spending $100 to $300 to provide their kids with a backpack full of supplies, so that they can complete their general education requirements. So that's where Treasures for Teachers comes in, and they can help support, help buffer some of that and kind of control some of those costs for our teachers and for our families. They provide, they fill that gap where there's needs for art supplies, writing materials, paper, cleaning supplies, office supplies, all these things that makes a classroom run well, so we can provide a quality education, and also provide enrichment activities that make learning fun. So the team shop, what we're looking to do is, the team shop is not utilized during the month of July. There's nobody in there, and Treasures for Teachers would like to come in and set up their supply shop to make this a pop-up shop for our West Valley educators. For the pop-up shop, current members of Treasures for Teachers would have free access to that space, and any new members that would like to utilize the space while it's operating at the ballpark, they would be charged a $10 membership fee. I'm excited to announce, though, that Treasures for Teachers did receive a $5,000 donation from Stepto and Johnson, and that $5,000 will provide the first 500 teachers that come through there with a free membership. So many of the teachers are going to be able to come through and be able to get these free and low-cost supplies for their classroom. For the lease, we are looking to provide the spaces an in-kind donation to Treasures for Teachers. We would be looking at a cost of approximately $500 for the electricity that would be used during that time. That would be for the lights and for the air conditioning, and that would be absorbed through the ballpark's operating budget. The Treasures for Teachers space, it will be operating, they'll be open from 9:00 to 3:00 Tuesday through Saturday, and so, impact to our staff at the ballpark would be very minimal. One of the things that I would like to highlight is, you know, our local educators and superintendents have shared that they're very excited that this resource would be available to them here in Goodyear. This would really provide those necessary supplies, and it really gives the teachers kind of a, just a sense of joy that they're be able to kick off their 2018-19 school year with some supplies they really need and some supplies that are just fun to have in your classroom. So because of these benefits for our community, we are recommending to execute a lease with Treasures for Teachers to utilize the team shop from July 6th through August 4th. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Bruce Kessman is here with me this evening, if you have any questions for either of us about Treasures for Teachers or the lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Could I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
To approve the agreement with the Treasures for Teachers for temporary use of the Goodyear Ballpark Team Shop. The lease agreement will be in effect from July 6th, 2018, to August 4th, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah. Thank you, Guy Lanes, for bringing this to us. I appreciate it. I know, after I was researching it and looking through it, I talked to some teachers, teacher friends that I know, and they were very, very excited about having a West Valley location. And I just want to thank you also for, I think, the very creative use of our space and being able to help out a nonprofit and help out our teachers, be able to provide better education and better resources to the students in our area. So it's very, very much needed as well. So thank you to your team for thinking of this and thinking of a space that we can use and that we can help out the community as well. So I'm on board with it. Thank you.
Good. Councilman Osborne?
Actually, you did a very good job at saying what I was just thinking. And you know what? That was a creative use and a way that the city can, can open up its doors and use some space that during this time, we're not using. And so, you know what? It's just wonderful. I appreciate you bringing it to us. Good job.
Thank you. Councilman Stip?
We have, I don't want to stereotype, do we have reps from Treasures for Teachers here? I'm looking at the ladies in the front row, and I may be wrong.
No, we don't have anybody from the Oregon Station with us this evening.
All right. I'm totally on board with this, with this whole piece. Bruce, I assume that the $500 is an estimate for electricity and air conditioning? Or, Guy Lanes, maybe you can answer that, but...
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, yes, the $500 is for the use of the air conditioning that would be used during that time, and then also for the electricity, for the necessary space that they would use it for.
Yeah, I don't, I have no, no issue with that. It's an estimate, so it's not hard dollars. It's not, you know, part of our community funding. We're just opening the doors and going forward, and I think that's an important part. As Councilmember Osborne and Hampton talked about, was this is just us using our facility to better the community. So I appreciate that.
Councilman Vazillo?
I'm just going to piggyback with all that's been said. I think it's a real worthwhile effort and the use of our facilities, and congratulate you for bringing this to us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Nothing? Well, it's just great. It's a great service. And I have to tell you, my daughter's a Title I teacher in California, and Ron and I have helped her pay for a lot of items in that classroom. And so, it definitely has been proven in my family, it's a need. So congratulation, great idea. So let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We're on 7.3 on business, to consider approving Pebble Creek Phase 2, Unit 60 preliminary plat. Katie, welcome. Welcome. I haven't seen you in a while, Katie. Planning managers, we're presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And I do have one presentation for this item and the next item. It's the preliminary and final plat. I know it is unusual to see the preliminary and final plat together. There was a previously approved preliminary plat on this site, and however, there were some changes made to it, some additional lots were added. And according to our regulations, which are in conformance with state statute, if you add a certain number of lots, you have to go back through the preliminary plating process. However, the customer asked if they could, if we would review both of the plats, knowing the final plat's coming at risk, and because we had looked at the plat before, staff was comfortable with meeting that customer request and bringing them both before you tonight. This parcel, Unit 60, is located off of Clubhouse Drive to the east of the 303. Access to the parcel will be provided off of Clubhouse Drive, and this is Unit 57, and that access to Clubhouse is being built with Unit 57. The development includes 135 lots, which represents a density of 3.14 dwelling units per acre. And the lots with numbers are part of this development. The dashed-out areas are areas that were platted under other plats. This was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the stipulations provided in the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And so, this is presentation on both of those, so we're going to go right through them both of them. All right, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody like to speak? Could I have a motion in a second? This is 7.3, to approve a request from the preliminary plat for Pebble Creek Phase 2, Unit 60, subject to stipulations. Do I hear a motion? I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell. A second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Vazillo. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Oh, I'm sorry, we had one nay, and the rest were ayes. Thank you. So we're going to vote, the next item then is the phase, consider approving the final plat for Pebble Creek Phase 2, Unit 60. And I have a motion in a second to approve the final plat, Pebble Creek 2, Unit 60, subject to stipulations. Motion?
Second.
All right, a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, a second from Councilman Stip?
Yep.
Oh, I got it. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, we had one nay. We had one nay and five ayes.
It's next to the front.
All right, that's all right. All right, that's it. Thank you very much, Katie. We'll go to 7.5. The next item is to consider approving the letter of intent for lease of land to the Wellspring Park Conservancy. Winnette Reed, Deputy City Manager, presenting. Winnette?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you this evening on the progress of the Community Health Park. With me tonight is the Secretary of the Wellspring Conservancy Board, Peter Edgitt, and I'm going to ask him to introduce the other board members that are present.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Dr. Jordan Leonard, a neonatologist from Envision.
Can they stand and stay standing as you introduce them, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Deb Robinson, health promotion and dietitian at Luke Air Force Base.
Oh, that side, okay. Stay standing.
Jerry Wilson from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And then Mike Faith from Faith Lettered and Faith Law Firm.
So tonight, we're going to do a very brief background to kind of remind everybody where we've come from and what's going on. I will go through the letter of intent and that overview, and then Peter's going to talk a little bit about the, speak for the board and inform you of the next steps for this exciting project. So as you recall, the retention basin land north of I-10 from Dyce Art to Bullard has been identified as a future park area and trail connector between Bullard Wash and the Sun Circle Trail since, Trail since the Parks and Trails Master Plan was adopted by council in 2014. Goodyear purchased nearly 130 acres of land north of I-10 from the Maricopa County District in May 2016 for the astounding amount of $233, thanks to a shared vision and excellent partnership with the county. The city officially closed on the land and took ownership on July 27th, and we have assumed the maintenance responsibilities at this time. This land is anchored by the city's Medical Innovation Corridor, including major employers and community assets such as the Brazza West Campus, Cancer Treatment Centers for America, and then in the near future, Adelante Healthcare. As the partners worked together, they developed a concept for a variety of amenities and programs that could take place in the Wellspring Park. The basins would be home to activities spanning the range from rehabilitation to recreation. Patients of the nearby hospitals and clinics would have access to green space to recover from illness and injury. Families would have a place to reflect, exercise, or play. Goodyear businesses would have access to corporate wellness facilities where they could conduct leadership training, team-building activities, or educate their workforce on healthy living. Building upon the organic farming on CTCAs campus, the partners envisioned demonstration gardens or raised garden beds that could be accessible to Goodyear residents of all ages and abilities. While none of these amenities are yet set in stone, they provide a concept of the potential While none of these amenities are yet set in stone, they provide a concept of the potential of Wellspring Park. In order to transform the concept to a community health park into reality, partners came together beginning in 2014. Led initially by John Coon, Abraza West Campus, Adelante Healthcare, CTCA, the county, and the city began working together to develop a strong vision for public space dedicated to health, wellness, and community gathering. As you can see from the milestones here, we've made significant progress. In October of 2016, we received the GE Healthy Cities Award for $75,000. And in July of 2017, the council adopted the conceptual master plan. In September of 2017 is when we became incorporated. That's the board of the Wellspring Conservancy. So we are now officially incorporated and a 501(c)(3). We continue to meet monthly and do a lot of great work, and that's where I'm going to leave that up to Peter to kind of talk a little bit more about that. But here is the West Park View, just a high level of the conceptual master plan, and then our East Park View. Now, if you'll indulge me, I get the exciting opportunity to go through the letter of intent that the city and the board has been working on. And the board recently approved, the Wellspring Conservancy Board recently approved the letter of intent. We're here tonight to seek the approval of the council. So if you'll indulge me, I will kind of read from the slides just to make sure we cover all of the important pieces of the letter of intent. There is a lease for the 129 acres on I-10 Basin to the Wellspring Park Conservancy. It's for the eventual development of Wellspring Park for a term of 100 years. The Conservancy will be responsible for fundraising for the construction and operation of the park. Park development will be consistent with the Wellspring Park Conceptual Master Plan, the City of Goodyear 2025 General Plan, and the 2014 Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan, as they may be amended in the future. The Conservancy shall develop a written strategy outlining achievable milestones towards fundraising and development of the park. Any development must maintain adequate required water retention capacity, and the City of Goodyear will retain responsibility for flood control capital maintenance during the term of the lease. The Conservancy may sublease portions of the property for complimentary uses to the park so long as any proceeds received go towards the future development and/or operation and maintenance of the park. The city shall have the right to approve any sublease in excess of five years. The Conservancy will develop the park in phases. The lease will initially be for 10 acres, and the Conservancy will develop the park in additional 10-acre minimum increments according to a takedown schedule. The Conservancy shall have a right of first refusal on acreage they have not taken down should the city contemplate other uses for those areas. Goodyear will continue to provide maintenance to undevelop portions of the basin, which are currently at $35,000 per year, until the Conservancy develops those areas. Goodyear will lease to the Conservancy the basin properties at a cost of $1 per acre per year for a 100-year term. Goodyear will waive permitting and plan review fees that would otherwise be the responsibility of the Conservancy. The Conservancy shall be responsible for the payment of any development impact fees. The city is not obligated to provide off-site infrastructure to the basin properties, but is not precluded from doing so in the future. Those are the components of the letter of intent. And I will stand for questions, but, and Rorick, City Attorney, has also been involved in this and can answer questions. But at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Peter Edgitt for board comments.
Welcome, Peter.
And next steps.
Thank you again. You know, this is such a unique idea, a, a public-private park that's self-funded and focuses on real health outcomes. The board and I believe that this will be a legacy that will impact generations of West Valley families indefinitely. We have a, we have an opportunity to lead Arizona, the nation, and literally the world with this collaboration between our city, our medical providers, and wellness and recreation professionals. This concept of cross-industry collaboration is growing in our country and abroad, as we are faced with an ever-increasing incidence of chronic disease. And this type of alliance is our only hope of creating a cure. Wellspring Park is an elegant solution to many of today's most serious problems, those associated with metabolic disease and mental health. Not only will Wellspring serve as a beautiful gateway into Goodyear, but it will be an icon to our commitment to health, vitality, and healing. We are literally saving the lives of our residents and saving our employers a fortune in healthcare costs. Couple those benefits with our mutual commitments detailed in the letter of intent, and this project is a win for everyone. Our next steps establish, or focus on establishing the lease agreement with the city that today's letter of intent established a foundation for. Simultaneously, we have established the job descriptions for our executive director, and we have begun that search. Finally, the fun of fundraising will begin, and, and just again, I'd like to reiterate the concept that this is a privately paid-for park. In closing, the dedication and commitment of the board, which is beyond anything that I've personally experienced, is aligned with the community vision of Goodyear's 2025 plan and the associated strategies. The board and I are here to answer any questions, and I truly believe that there's no obstacle associated with this that we cannot overcome, and the future is as bright as we want it to be.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Could I have a motion a second to approve the letter of intent for the leased land to the Wellspring Park Conservancy? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Stiff. Open for council discussion. Councilman Vazillo?
You know, this isn't news to us, but it's great. I agree with you. This is, this is a great collaboration, and hopefully the end result will be healthier people, even including myself, which could use a lot of that as well. So again, I wish you well in your endeavor and looking forward to this thing getting off the ground. Thank you.
Councilman Stiff?
I think this is a great example of a public-private partnership, and we're really looking forward to what this develops and into. It will be a great signature piece for the community, for us to have it, and, and then for all of the other benefits that you mentioned. So thanks for you and everyone else on the Conservancy's board and, and the supporters. Thanks for being out there.
Vice Mayor? Okay. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah. Likewise. I think this is a great partnership, private-public partnership, and I also look forward to see it as it continues to grow and grow, and be able to use it. And it really helps out a lot of people in the community and becomes a real true landmark for the city, the West Valley, and like you said, the state. I think it's, looking at the, in the previous iterations compared to other parks in the nation, I think this will definitely be a, a big, a, a really neat project for the city and the state. So thank you so much to your team and to the board. I know they're excited to get moving, and I'm real excited to see, see it moving as well. So, so thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, tonight's been a good night for parks and for the health of our, our community and our people. You said it very well. You know, everything that you stated was, was right on. And, and there's not, there's not a lot left to say but to thank you. I really do believe the vision here is, is something that will be a point of pride and of light to, to our city. But this is, this is also something that people will travel to come to. You know, this is something that you, sometimes you talk about health tourism, wellness tourism, things like that. People are drawn to amenities in this way. And so it, it's really going to be awesome for our city, but I think that we'll be seeing a lot of people traveling outside of Goodyear to want to experience it also. Thanks.
Well, I've been excited ever since we all went to White Plains, New York and presented this to GE, along with other nine other cities there with their projects. And we, we caught people's attention at that, at that event, and the outcome of it has been your work so far. And I think they're still involved in that somehow, and I think they may, again, make a contribution to the City of Goodyear on this project. So we really appreciate all the work you've done on the Conservancy to this part. This was not easy, just to form the board and to make all these decisions. And you've done an excellent job, and I thought the, the letter of intent was well done. So thank you. And thank you for coming up tonight. All right. So let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. We had five, we had, yes.
Mayor, Peter would like to make one more comment, if that's all right.
Yes, you may.
I would just like to acknowledge the public support that's here tonight. Thank you guys for coming out.
All right. Did you get that vote? All right. Thank you. All right. Before, the next item on business is consider the financial policy revisions, and I'm inviting our city manager to the, you want to do it from there? All right. To present before we introduce Lori.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The next two items will be presented together by our budget manager, and I just wanted to make a few comments in that the, the action for tonight is to consider adoption of the tentative agenda and some updated financial policies. And the tentative budget is a culmination of the process that began in February when council and staff came together to review priorities. And of course, the budget's heavily based upon your input and recently adopted strategic plan. And really, it's truly a year-round process. The budget, of course, is one of council's top policy documents as it establishes the resource allocation to meet the best interests of the community. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Lori Wittenroth, who will make the presentation on both of these items. Thank you.
Welcome, Lori.
Thank you. I will kind of walk through a few slides here. It's one of our shorter budget presentations, and I'd be happy to answer questions either as we go or at the end.
Thank you.
Just as an overview of what we're going to cover, I want to go through the revisions that we've made in the tentative budget as compared to the city manager's budget that we presented in April 16th. Most of those changes are related to the carryovers, which we indicated at that point in time were not yet included. Then we'll just give you kind of a high-level overview of the large, of the dollar amount and the makeup of that budget. And then I want to do a little bit more conversation on the CIP and let you know where we are in terms of that process, updating that process, and then the information on the timelines for the projects that are in the FY19 CIP. And at the end, I'll summarize the financial policy changes. Again, those items were discussed at the April 9 meeting. We presented the compliance of the FY19 budget with the financial policies and the changes that are recommended today were presented at that time as well.
Thank you.
So in terms of the changes, the major change is the inclusion of the carryovers. And this year, the carryovers are unusually high, and I'll go through that a little bit more in a couple of slides. But the carryovers added $91.3 million to the tentative, or to the manager's budget recommendations. And if you want to look at the carryovers in detail, they're included in the city schedules portion of the tentative budget, and it lists each of the carryovers there, but I'll, I'll highlight some of the, the major items. And by way of comparison, to give you a sense of the magnitude of this particular year, the last couple of years, carryovers have been in the 30 to $31 million range. In terms of the operating budget, carryovers are $7 million of that total. The largest single item of that are, is $2.2 million in the economic development programs, which is essentially the impact fee program that was created to provide impact, certain impact fees for retail entities. There, the ambulance, and that also includes some of the remaining job credit funding and the equal opportunity or economic opportunity fund. The other larger general fund carryover is the one-time cost associated with the ambulance program that's being planned for next, or fiscal '20 to open. And then there's also a large carryover related to fire pumpers that are in order, that we're expecting to be delivered after the end of the fiscal year. And then one item that I wanted to call attention to was that we have carried over the water drought contingency, which was included in this year's budget, based on conversations that the council has shared through the budget process. In terms of the capital project carryovers, I was, wanted to present them to you in terms of kind of by fund and then also by some major project categories. As you can see in looking at this, the green through the light blue, the purple, the green, and the light blue are utility-related and the GO bond projects. And then impact fees, most of those are also related to the utility projects. In terms of the projects, as you can see, one project, the surface water project is $27 million of these carryovers. That's one of the reasons these carryovers are unusually large this year. We are taking on a $114 million project, which is not common to our budget. In addition, there's two other large expansion projects going on, on the utility areas, and that's almost $9 million of the carryovers for the work going, being done at Site 12, and then over $12 million for the work at the Goodyear Reclamation Facility. And then we're also building some fire stations, and again, not common that we would have multiple fire stations under construction. So that's another $11 million of the carryovers. So that kind of gives you a sense of what, what the carryovers are, and I also wanted to just kind of highlight why they are larger than we normally see. Now I thought I'd just go through the rest of the changes associated, or from the manager's recommended budget to the tentative budget, which is at $447.4 million. It's our largest budget since 2008, I believe. The carryovers were the nine point, 91.3 million. The next biggest piece is 29 million associated with the capital project reserve. When we presented the city manager's budget, we had moved the general funds out of, into that particular project. What we're dealing with here are the impact fees and the GO bonds primarily associated with the recreation campus projects. If you'll remember, we haven't come forward with a specific budget. As they just explained a few items earlier, we are just now in the, the phase of thoroughly scoping and costing those projects. So we've reserved those funding in that capital project reserve for when we're ready to come back and make a recommendation to council. There was also, we've increased a few of the impact fee revenue estimates, and as a result, in some cases, we're required to reimburse the developers what we collect, and so we've added the costs associated with those developer reimbursements. We did find a technical error in the manager's budget where we had included the, mistakenly included the ongoing cost in the, on top of the one-time cost and the one-time thing. So we had those costed twice. So we took those out of the fire department budget since they were already in there, or they were in, we brought them down to the appropriate level, and we moved those dollars into the capital reserve project, consistent with what we've done throughout the budget process. And then there was, in the manager's budget, we had captured an early carryover in the fleet budget, so we took it out of the manager's budget and treated it appropriately as a So the $447.4 million budget is made up of primarily a large dollar, a large amount associated with capital projects, and yet those areas of bonds and developer contributions, impact fees, and much of the use of fund balances associated with those, those costs. In terms of expenditures, just providing you a, kind of a look at how the budget's being divvied up. Again, a full 35% is going to the CIP, and as you heard earlier, almost all of those carryovers, which is another 20%, are related with the CIP. So essentially, 50% of the budget is related to capital projects. No change in the position recommending, or the position addition recommendations from what was presented at the city manager's budget. And just as a reminder, with our new financial system, we have a concept of position control, and we're now accounting for part-time FTEs. And so that's what that 41 in red represents is the addition of those 41 FTEs to our count. They were always there in our budget. We just didn't identify their full-time equivalent. And then this is just a listing of the 31 positions that are added. Of course, there's 14 associated with one of the, with the opening, planned opening of a newer, new fire station. And then the three narcotics position. Call attention to the recreation supervisor, which is, we're bringing on, using the O and M costs set aside in anticipation of the recreation campus that will be opening up in the future. And then the addition of a special events coordinator. That's consistent with the council's That's consistent with the council's recent new priorities in the strategic plan. So that's kind of an overview of the budget. I thought I'd go through, there's been some interest and a lot of activity going on relative to the CIP. And so what I wanted to start with is, we were asked to provide information on the timelines for the individual projects that are in the FY19 CIP. And in the CIP portion of the materials you received, the, what I'm showing on the screen here is just kind of a sample of what that report does. What I thought I'd do is kind of give you a few examples of how this is working. So we're using color coding to indicate at what phase the project is in. So if you look at the very bottom one, it says impact fee study, and it's a faint yellow. So that's the pre-scoping study type phase. And so we anticipate completing that project by the end of FY19. And that's the current study that's in process. Kind of moving up from there, and I'm referring to the screen, which is bits and pieces out of the document that you have. The impact fee audit, you'll notice it's mentioned as biannual. Some things are in the CIP. This one, in this case, because it uses impact fee funds. So there's things like that. A couple up from there, there's ongoing is listed for things like reimbursements that were required to make for developers or for debt service. So those are things that don't have a specific beginning and end at this point in time. Otherwise, we are using, you know, if you look at the fire station 181, we're showing three different lines there. The pink line is we're, have land acquisition to complete, and that's in progress. And then there's also the planning design line, which shows that we're also, at the same time, we're buying land, we're working on the planning of that project. And then the construction is the blue color. So we're showing that we would expect that project to be complete by April of 2020. And we're showing the timeframe under which that construction will occur. So that's how we have opted to present the information on timelines here. And we'll certainly take any feedback or suggestions if that is not meeting the desire of the council. Also wanted to kind of go over where we are, and this is just examples of some of those projects and their completion dates, some of the larger projects. For example, we heard earlier that the, what's going on with the offsites and the recreation campus. We are calling out here that one particular piece of the offsites is expected to be done by December of '18, just because of the timing of when the canals are dried up. But essentially, we just called out a couple of the more significant items on there. And in terms of streets, there's two streets projects. Van Buren Estrella Parkway to Saraval, which will be completed in September of '19, and Saraval Jefferson to Yuman, which will be completed in March of '20. The surface water plant, we're looking for completion in December of 2021. And those two expansions that are going on will be done in the spring and summer of '19. And then in terms of the process, if, remind everybody that we, there are still CIP projects that were in the, the CIP that was adopted for this year's budget. What we brought forward in this year's budget process was only the projects that we felt needed to move forward in FY19, either because they were already in process, or they were critical for some other reasons, such as the repairs at the ballpark. So we are continuing to review the remaining projects that were in that original CIP by going through a process where we review the scopes of the projects, the descriptions with the owner departments. We kind of prepare some, the departments prepare initial estimates for both the project and the O and M. And then engineering and the budget area review those costing estimates and help the departments fine-tune them. And then we have a team that works together to look at those materials, to look at the reasonableness, ask all the important questions, and then move forward to give the department advice on changes they might want to make, to ultimately get to a point where we're prepared to make funding and financing option recommendations. So the process that we started, we are completed with the first few steps of that. And when we, when we've taken the police department through the whole process, which is why this Phase Two of the police ops facility is included in the CIP, because it did go through this whole process. And then just again, a reminder, we're, our plan is to bring the CIP back as part of the FY '20 budget process. And we will also be looking at new projects that may need to come in as well in that process. If any projects are ready to move forward that were in the original budget or that are out there before the FY '20 process is ready to be moved forward budget process, we do have that project, capital project reserve set up that has funding available so we could come to you mid-year and say, hey, they've made progress on this recreation campus, we're ready. You know, we want to come talk to you about funding that. But we would prefer to do as much as we possibly can in scope of all of the capital projects that you'll need to look at. And then just as a reminder, the capital project reserve has 9.1 in general funds in it. Some of those general funds came from projects like the offsites for the recreation campus, so we've moved them out of the original project they were in and put them in this other project for us to come back later on to redistribute. And the same with the BO, GO bonds and the parks impact fees. And then the last piece of this, and we have two action items. One is to approve the financial policy changes, and the other is to approve the tentative budget. And so there were two recommended financial policy changes, and these are also in your materials. And they're consistent with what was presented in, in April. The first is to recognize that $4.5 million in construction sales tax shall be treated as ongoing revenue. And that is to recognize that there, recognizing that there is some general level of contracting going on regularly. And we discussed earlier in the year, our historical use of construction sales tax due to some sales tax reporting changes. And then the other is, there is a debt management policy that is, relates to the ongoing revenue, ongoing general fund revenues. And we just wanted it to be clear that the construction sales tax that is allocated according to the first item would be included in that analysis. And with that, just the next steps, obviously, ask any questions or information that you have today. There would be a number of publications presented in the paper for, related to property tax, truth and taxation, as well as the budget itself. The current schedule would call for you to hold the public hearing on the budget and truth and taxation on June 11th, and that would be the day that final budget adoption would be completed. And then we would do the property tax levy on June 25th. And so I'm here to answer your questions and ask you to approve the tentative budget and the revisions to the financial policies.
Thank you, Lori. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Pardon me, none?
No.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, we're going to take this one at a time, so I got to have a motion a second to approve the revisions to the financial policies. Do I hear a motion? I'm sorry, you said it, so was, is that you, Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor made the motion. The second was from Councilman Basillo. Okay, open for council discussion. Let's start down, anybody on this side?
I do.
Councilman Osborne?
Okay. The policy with this construction sales tax issue. I know you showed us a chart back of the revenues generated from construction sales tax over the years. I can't find it right now.
If you, hang on one second.
Got it.
If Lainey could put up Presentation C. Oops. Okay, is that, that's the chart you're looking at?
Okay. Yes, so the, the lowest share was fiscal year 11. And the 2.5% would have been, was that like 3.8 million?
That would have been, if you want to look at the numbers, that's what we have. Although that doesn't break it out into the general fund.
Because you had the 2.5% and the 1%. So.
Yeah, so it would have been just under $4 million if, if the two point, if we were in the situation we are today, where the 1% has to go to the impact fees.
That, I guess, being conservative, that's the number I'm basing it more on in my own mind, that, you know, we never want to hit that point again. But that could be reality. And, and that's what I'm a little concerned about, the 4.5. Yeah, I, I understand why we're doing all this, I get it. But I guess I just, you know, that, that 3.8 would have been something that I would have been, I think, a little stronger on feeling as a policy, because we, we've always said, you know, these one-time monies should go to one-time projects and not ongoing. And so, yeah, well, but you know, in, in conservative financial policies, that's what you stick with. And, and we've seen where, that was devastating times. We know, that was awful times when we were, we were dealing with that. And so, and I don't want to believe that it'll ever hit that again, but at the same time, this is a big change to a policy. So I'm just not comfortable, I'd love to hear other opinions on that.
Brandon, do you have something? Anything to say? No, just your, no, she's finished, so whatever you want to talk about on, on that one, on that particular.
On that particular topic? Yeah, I, I thought we came to a consensus. We were looking at a, what was it? Was it 5 million? It was the lowest five years, but we're looking at going to like 4.5 recommended. Yeah, there it is, right there. And I was, I was okay with that in regards to this.
The difference is the 1% that can never be part of.
The, yeah, it is ongoing.
What the councilman is referring to is, we have identified that the general fund portion, which is the 2.5, for the lowest five years shown here, the average was $5.1 million. The five-year, most recent five-year average was 6.9, and the eight-year average was 5.9. So that, those averages are associated with just the general fund portion. They don't include the 3.5.
The state won't allow us to use that 1% towards ongoing.
Correct, and that's why we have excluded the 1% from those numbers.
And that's why I feel, that's why I was feeling the 3.8 was more conservative.
Councilman Stip.
Okay, I had, I had to write down my stuff.
Bill, will you pull that just a little bit closer so I can hear it? Thank you.
I'm trying to read and talk at the same time. So if I can just read what I've written on this particular subject. About three years or so ago, Lori, you showed us a revenue projection chart that showed that in roughly 2019 or 2020 expenditures and revenues were going to touch, that we wouldn't be over in revenue and under in expenses. It was a rejection from a number of years ago, and we kind of moved forward with that. But your presentation earlier this year, in, I think it was February or May, it might have even been that very first one in January, really showed that that is what was happening. But then by the March 19th work session, we find this construction sales tax issue comes up, and that numbers, the number now separates expenditures and revenues are no longer touching. The recommended change in revenue was a result of the use of construction sales tax as a source of ongoing revenues. For years, we have all preached and practiced the philosophy of no one-time funds pay for ongoing expenses. In fact, we had a fiscal policy that stated such, even though we've accidentally been using some for the last 10 or 15 years anyway, but we had a policy that said we wouldn't do it. Both the International City Managers Association and the Government Financial, Financial Officers Association discouraged the use of one-time or temporary funds from being used to pay for operational expenses. Both of these associations recommend public policies acknowledging the use of these types of funds, funds, which obviously we're being asked to do tonight. However, Governing Magazine lists as the number one of its seven deadly sins of public finances to balance the budget with one-time fixes. And their number four deadly sin is to misapply a temporary windfall, which is making generous decisions on top of a bull market, at the top of a bull market, instead of recognizing where we are in the cycle. And yet, we're being poised to do just that tonight. Using the current formula in place today, 2.5 and the 1%, which this chart reflects, our lowest three years of fiscal year 10, 11, and 12 averaged $4.3 million as our average construction sales tax in that 2.5 range. With the ICMA and the GFOA discouraging these uses and keeping with our conservative culture, I'd like to see, see us use a construction sales tax figure of no more than $3 million annually. I, I think we're starting to get down a slope of when it happens, and it's going to happen, we are going to be looking at significant budget adjustments as a result of us using one-time monies to pay for ongoing expenses. I realize we've been doing it accidentally. From 2008 through 2017, we've used between 1.2 million and 2.5 million per year of construction sales tax to fund the ongoing operations. In 2018, after only 10 months, we're poised to use 3.2 million, and for 2019, we're being asked to use 4.5 million. I think we're starting to lose control of what one-time monies really are. I am adamantly opposed to 4.5 million in this number. I agree, we should have a policy, but I think 4.5 is way too high.
Next, Councilman Basillo.
Yeah, I can appreciate Councilmember Stip's position. We have thoroughly vetted this earlier during our budget talks. And, yeah, I agree, one-time money shouldn't be used, but we have been using it and to hit the general operations of the city by reducing it significantly, because we had thoroughly discussed when they were recommending this average of 5 million. And we said, no, that was too much to bring it down to 4.5. And there's nothing that says we can't revisit it in the future. And I believe there's enough cushion, and there's enough that we can make changes if for some reason disaster hits and it goes to zero, which I don't think it ever will. But if it goes to zero, where we can address that issue. I have no problem with the 4.5, because that's what we had negotiated as we went through here. But I also think that it doesn't hurt in the future to go back and take a look at that, because the closer we can get to not using any of it. Even though we have been using it for operating, to take it away would be devastating to, in my humble opinion, to the operation. So the 4.5 was negotiating, I'm, I'm willing to stick with that. If for some reason, at the end of the year, or the next budget year, we have to take another look at that, then I, I will do that.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Basillo, because in our budget discussion, the 5 million came up, and Councilmember Stip suggested we do 4.5. Well, he didn't, you didn't, yes, he did.
Well, actually, I said four, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said 4.5, well, whatever. So we all were negotiating with each other. But I agree with Councilmember Basillo, we can certainly take a look at this if we need to, if it looks like we need to readjust. This is just a projected budget, but it does not preclude us from taking a look at it and realigning it throughout the year. This is, is not necessarily set in stone, I don't think. If I understand our responsibilities as councilmembers, we have the option to go back in and do whatever we need to do to make sure that we, we stay solvent.
Mayor, councilmember, at any point in time, the council can recommend a change to the budget. That's, we come to you with recommended budget transfers. But, you know, it would be, you know, adopting a financial policy would be something we would hope would be something that would sustain us through at least a year. I will just remind the council that we have lead notice of when we might begin to see a fall in construction sales tax. We have building permitting activity, planning activity going on, and so we are monitoring that coming in. So we would be prepared to notify the council in advance if we start to see a drop-off in kind of the leading indicators of the construction sales tax. So there are certainly avenues to do that. We also provide a monthly financial report that provides specific information on sales tax and on the one-time versus ongoing general fund revenues.
Yes, Joe?
Just to follow up, which you just mentioned, my hope would be, because of all those leading indicators that you have, if for some reason, because this is operations and, and typically, the old theory on budgets, you overestimate revenues, underestimate expenses, so there's always going to be savings at the end. But if for some reason, you've, you determine that the 4.5 is not enough to cover, I would expect you to.
I would expect you to come back and say, we need to uh put a freeze on X, Y, or Z to make sure that that thing balances.
So can I clarify something? So uh Vice Mayor, you're agreeing with Joe?
Yes, I agree.
And I'm going to go down here to Councilman Sworn. Oh, you've already spoken once. All right, all right. Anymore?
Yeah, I mean, I I agree also with, I mean, I know we agreed on the four point five and I I don't want to use constructions one-time money as a long-term policy. I know we've we've used the uh, was it the average going forward? So I'm okay with the four point five, but if we, I don't want, to Bill's point, I don't want a trend of us just keep going and going and going. I want to cap it at this point and then re- relook at the policy later.
Yeah, I'm kind of concerned a little bit um about even pushing this further here. Uh, you know, we've had meetings and discussions uh and somehow this wasn't brought forth. And now comes at the last, you know, at this timeframe. So I am concerned a little bit about this. You had ability to uh uh talk to staff, you had the ability to bring it forth and on the dais and and now we're bringing this. So um I'm not sure where this vote's going to go. And so what are my recourse's at this point if I didn't want this vote to go through tonight or come back? What do I have? Just tell me before I pass it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, at this point, you have a motion on the table. So unless you have a motion to table the matter to a later date, the the vote needs to go forward.
That's what I might do. That's what I'm asking.
If a councilmember would like to make a motion to table or postpone, then.
At one point, at one point. Okay, so let's let's finish. Bill wanted to say something.
Mayor, I was just going to offer a uh an amendment to the motion that we uh, which is to change the financial policy and to add the language in there that it be, must be reviewed annually.
And then that that would make you?
It will not make me happy. I won't, I won't be in support of it, but at least we have, because I know every, I I'm assuming everyone else is going to vote for it. And if that's the case, then I want an assurance that we are going to look at this every single year, that it is not automatic that it's four point five million.
I don't, I don't mind that. Um, not at all. Uh, what I, as a mayor, what I'm somewhat discouraged at that you have held back and not brought this forth for discussion. And we get to this night, and if you've attended these meetings on the budget, and most of us have. So your opinion, I had no idea, or was it brought up for us to discuss? And for, it's disconcerting, so I just have to tell you.
Well, Mayor, ju- on on that note, I have um my initial comments and what I had to say here tonight was, I have had a number of email exchanges and a really robust, good conversation with the city manager regarding my feeling on this and and these these subjects. So um I real-
But not on the dais?
Not on the dais.
Because you weren't here.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make that.
But it, this is not a, what I'm saying tonight is not a surprise.
Not that you're not, not that I don't think you should have your opinion, Bill. You know that. I feel everybody should express it. It's just that if you haven't done it on the dais, um and now all of a sudden, we're at this point, it makes it very, very difficult. Um, I uh don't want this budget to fail. We have right up front on it. I don't want it to fail. Um, I can understand what you're saying on on the four point five. Uh, and and um so how does the council feel about um what Bill suggested if?
I've made a motion to add that language, so if there's not a second, then.
To annually?
To add that language annually.
I'll second that.
You second that. All right.
Discussion?
Discussion. Okay.
Um, we should be doing this routinely. Um, if it makes you feel better to have it in there, fine, but this happens all the time. We have to uh adopt the policy, so there's nothing saying that every year we would do this. Do we need it actually formally? I don't think so, but if it'll make others happy, then so be it, because we do this as a regular basis of every budget is to review the policies. So we should be doing that regularly.
Yeah, I'm not uncomfortable with Bill's suggestion. All right, just to make that known. So, all right, down here. Joanne?
Okay, so my my question to uh, my my position on ongoing and one-times hasn't changed. I do feel better about the annual statement. However, how does that, to me, policies um are policies that you you set that are supposed to last a while, that you're not playing with every year, and then maybe you change those numbers. Or I, and that that concerns me a little bit, and maybe maybe I shouldn't be concerned about it. But does a policy like that, being flexible, how does that look to bond ratings? When they, when they look at our financial policies, does this make it weaker? Does this make it stronger? Or is there just really no connection to it?
Mayor, Councilmember, I I believe bond rating agencies look for you to have financial policies and to make wise decisions. I believe they would look favorably on us, recognizing that historically we have been using these revenues. And the other thing I'd like to share is uh, there are lots of uh, lots of information out there about what is, you know, not using one-time revenues. I I would remind you that some of those policies or those best practices that are written by somebody like GFOA are written for the entire country. And there are other parts of the country that rely heavily on property taxes uh when you compare them to Arizona. Uh, in Arizona, you know, there are other states and other cities that don't even have a construction sales tax. So it it may be something that we want to think about moving forward is I think what we're trying to do is better define what is one-time revenue. Because some could argue that one-time revenue is that reimbursement we get for a developer for a specific project um and is not something that's an ongoing sales tax base that may be cyclical or be, you know, have some kind of relationship uh to recessionary periods. And I'd also just remind everybody that the the ten and eleven and twelve time period is one of the worst recessions that this country has experienced. And to judge this policy strictly on those lowest of lows uh may also be something we want to look at even a longer term kind of performance of construction sales tax, perhaps in the valley, perhaps in the West Valley, uh because we're also, you know, a rapidly growing city. If if you go back even further, you you can see there were some very high numbers that we wouldn't want to rely on moving forward.
Right, absolutely. Yes, Bill?
Lori, I do not want to be argumentative in any way, shape, or form. I think it's a very slippery slope when we start talking about best practices from national organizations maybe not being the best thing, because then we throw all of our best practices out the window with that bathwater. And and I think that becomes a very slippery slope. A best prac- an industry best practice is an industry best practice. And if we can't agree to to that between a council and the staff, then we're probably in trouble for the ninety-nine other things that we're going to do with everyone because we rely very heavily on staff telling us this is a best practice and this is an industry standard and these are the things that we should do. And I think the council supports that entirely. So to try to water that down, I I'm just, that is a very slippery slope that I do not want to.
May I respond to that? I, because I did not intend to have that.
That's how I received that.
The message I was trying to give is understanding what the definition of one-time revenue is that is within those. And what I'm suggesting is that it may be that what the definition of one-time revenue is very different than what the city of Goodyear has chosen to interpret as one-time revenue. I am in no way suggesting that we shouldn't follow the policies that are being suggested. I'm just questioning the interpretation of them and whether.
And I think going forward, I would agree that if we had a definition of what on, of what one-time versus ongoing is, that maybe that we resolve this this situation. In in addition, you know, Mayor, you talked about just getting this information tonight. We've been presented this particular chart a number of times. It's been in a couple of the different program uh slide decks that you've seen over the last month or so. We've not taken the time to talk about what the actual numbers are that represent those blue bars in those lowest three years that we that we have, and those numbers are staggeringly low. So if, I know you think it's a last-minute deal, but they've they've been in there, so I I think we look to the future.
No, it's just the discussion is the last minute. I I don't appreciate that.
I think we look to the future and and hope that we get those numbers rather than the chart.
We had all that time for staff to work and we had all this other time and we have not used that. So if I, as a mayor, have been slight on this and and didn't pick that up, I apologize for that. But so to solve this tonight, um I think that.
We have to vote on the amendment.
On the amendment. So somebody has to make that amendment.
I've made the motion. It's been seconded.
It's already been made. It's on the floor.
All right, thank you. And be ready to second. So we're all set on this?
You're set.
So would you repeat what we're voting for, please?
As I understand it, you're just adding the language to policy one, adding D. Four point five million in construction sales tax, I put comma, to be reviewed annually, uh shall be treated as ongoing revenue. Is that what you intended, Councilwoman Stip?
Yes, yes.
All right. Do I need to roll call in there?
No.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
I'll go along, yeah.
All right.
I think we do that routinely. It's no big deal.
Okay, so it passed.
Okay.
Okay, so now.
Unanimous?
Back to your main motion.
Okay.
How many nays were there?
Nine.
You know, unanimous. Okay.
Unanimous, okay.
So so I have this clear. I'm voting out on seven point six. Is that where we're on? Okay, thank you very much. So, all right, council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. I think the ayes got it.
Hold on just a moment.
I did this so that we would be able to get the vote thing passed tonight to come back and discuss this issue.
I didn't, no.
We did seven point six, right? Seven point six, okay.
Maybe I misunderstood the vote on this.
That's that's correct. It was seven point six. It was the revision of the financial policies as amended with the to be reviewed annually language.
Okay.
So that's what the vote was.
Okay, so I thought we were voting now on the.
On the tentative budget.
Now, now we'll move to the tentative budget.
Oh, I I misunderstood because I thought we were voting on, all right, all right. It was just me, no, and the rest, yes.
Against it.
I voted against it.
Five to one. Five, one.
So I I don't even know what I voted on now.
You didn't vote, no. Why don't we take the vote again, Mayor, and let's do it with a roll call?
Pardon me?
Let's do a roll call on that.
Yeah, let's do a, and we're doing a roll call on which part of this?
On the main motion.
Seven point six.
Okay.
Seven point six, which is adapt the financial policy.
The main motion is to accept this, right?
Includes the new.
Including the new language, yes.
Including a language we've heard. Thank you very much. All right, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell. Councilmember Hampton.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborn.
Aye.
Councilmember Vazillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Stip.
Nay.
Mayor Lord.
Aye.
Passes five, one.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll go to seven point seven. It's already been presented. So the Deputy Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, plead resolution twenty eighteen dash eighteen forty-five by title only, please.
Adopt resolution number two thousand eighteen dash eighteen forty-five, adopting the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen estimates of revenues and expenses for the city of Goodyear, including estimated property tax levy and property tax rates as the tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, setting forth the receipts and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year. The amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adoption of budget and setting the tax levies.
Thank you. Could I have a motion? Start a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Vazillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Vazillo.
Mine is more of a comment. You've heard this before. When it comes to the policy of taxing um people throughout the city for city water projects that benefit, the city is a utility company, but we're taxing through a property tax and that's what we're going to do, those throughout the city. I, my personal opinion, and I know I'm a minority on this, it's a bad policy to do that because we have multiple water companies in our town and we should be able to cover our own, especially when there's viable options. The cost of that seven point five million dollar set service, it would be a small percentage increase if you would put it actually on the uh rate. So uh, you know, I'm opposed to that, but I'm going to vote for the budget because that's, I just want to make sure I'm on the record opposed to that policy. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilman Stip?
I will wait for Joe to kick the soapbox back over to me. I'm going to read the rest of what I had uh written in here. So as obviously many of you know, I was out of town during the budget work sessions that were held in April this year. Um, I did exchange a number of emails with our city manager, asking questions and sharing my concerns about what was being discussed and how we were funding many of this year's increases. I also expressed to the city manager that I understood, conceptually, obviously, that she really inherited a budget process that was already very well out of the gate and that she had the job now to bring it across the finish line. We have had some great conversations when I returned and I really appreciate her candor uh about the future and and the ability to exchange dialogue. So obviously, nothing of what I'm saying here tonight is really a surprise to the city manager. I had a number of uh concerns that I wanted to share um with you. One was the uh, was the policy. The other is uh this year's general fund budget reflects an increase of seven point eight percent and contains a number of expenses that really, at this point, are now seeming excessive. The two hundred and fifty percent increase in council discretionary funds is one example. If we, as individual council members, need to grant additional funds throughout the year through the use of this discretionary fund, then we should quite honestly be reducing the amount of money in the community funding line by that amount and not increasing our granting of taxpayer monies. The services and the organizations that we fund through the community funding process are very well deserving, but I think we should ask ourselves if the city of Goodyear and its taxpayers are the best funding source. Next is according to the Society for Human Resource Managers, the average wage increase in twenty eighteen in our country is three percent. And the Bureau of Labor Statistics reports that the average private sector increase in the Phoenix metro area is three point six percent. Yet we are providing a five percent increase this year. We have to ask ourselves if this too is something that we can sustain. After um, we carefully examined the O and M revenues and then the ongoing expense increases over the years, I'm concerned that whether we have the ability to continue paying for the services beyond the O and M periods. I haven't seen the figures that support it. I'm concerned that these issues will come up again, uh really to bite us uh much farther down the road, perhaps as early as twenty twenty-two, but perhaps as late as twenty twenty-four. Someone described this budget as us being flush with cash, quote unquote, so that we could add a number of new programs, projects, and positions. I've been saying for the past four years that we haven't looked at our ability to provide effec- efficient and effective services with the resources that we currently have. Many of you have heard from me the reference of the quartet effect. The premise is that a one-man band plays music as does a full orchestra. The quality of the music varies greatly between these two extremes. With a quartet playing just the right amount, uh the right mix, that most everyone is satisfied with the quality of the music. I'm not suggesting that we establish one-man bands, but I'm now be- becoming less inclined to support the size of the orchestra that we are building with this budget. As we are increasing our staffing by five point five percent, we still ref- refuse to look at returning monies to our residents. We have been saying for years that, quote, "We don't know what the legislature will do or what the economy will do, so let's not abandon a a known revenue source." And at this point, we don't appear to be concerned about those effects when it comes to using one-time monies to support ongoing operations or how those things will impact us when the next market adjustment occurs. So I'm suggesting that perhaps we make a commitment to eliminate the grocery food tax over the next, over a four-year period, once we start receiving payments from the Sports Tourism Authority, and that we start digging deep into the things we've always done to see if we, if they still make sense for us to do them, to start looking for automation efficiencies and and that we start providing the council with data-driven and supported justifications for the growing of our government services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Councilman Osborn?
Thank you. You know, there's a a lot of things in this budget to be proud of. There's a lot of um items that we've been tasked for growth with our fire departments and um just increases that are coming with the fact that we now have a population of eighty-four thousand. And and it's just coming with the size of our city, and I respect that. But I, as I watched into some of the points that um Councilmember Stip said, since the recession, since the time, and this being my final, my final vote as a council member, you know, back during the recession, I was one that had to. back during the recession, I was one that had to make that choice of raising sales tax when we laid off employees, when we, we decimated our budgets, when we threw out the CIP. None of that, you know, we could even think about, and knew at that time we were doing the right thing. And, every year, you guys all hear it from me, let's right the wrong, let's get rid of the grocery food tax, let's right the wrong. We've lowered it twice. I've asked other years, let's right the wrong. Let's ask our citizens, what do they think? In a survey, they said if a tax was to be decreased, it would be grocery food. As I look from the point of recession today, we've, we've hired more than a hundred employees since that time. We've been doing what we need to do. We've been giving raises, we've been bringing our, our talent to a very competitive price, because we want to keep them here. And, and we are about to hit a point in time where, and I said at our, and I said here on the dais at the last budget discussion, you know, I know this isn't the year to lower grocery food tax, I know that, but I do know that the future's coming with that STA payment, and we never talk about righting the wrong. We have the highest restaurant tax in the state. We have things, we just last week discussed transit, we've discussed public safety, we've discussed quality of life. But if we can right the wrong of looking at the future of getting rid of a grocery food tax, then we can go to our citizens and say, okay, here's what's in front of us. Maybe it is a single tax for public safety, or for transit, or for, you know, whatever it may be, but allow the opportunity for the citizens to look at it. So, where I'm very proud that we're fiscally solvent, where I'm proud that we make decisions for our citizens. I, I can't vote in favor of this budget, because what I have felt for years and years was to right that wrong, and this is my final opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Joanne. Somebody else? Brandon? Joe?
This has been a long, arduous process, this budget, where we all give and take on this, again, there's a lot of good things in there, I'm not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, you know, I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's something we came to consensus with, and I'm gonna be voting for it.
Molly?
Thank you. Lori, I want to thank you for your budget presentation and for all the hard work that you and your staff and Doug has done throughout these months. I appreciate very much you taking time out today to sit down with me and answer specific questions that I had. We don't have everything in the budget that we want, and I agree with Joanne, I'm so sorry that we are, we have a food tax, but we have it, in every city I go to to shop besides Goodyear, I pay a food tax as well, and I hope someday we'll be able to reduce that, but we cannot do it today. The fire stations that are in our budget are extremely important to our, our citizens. We promised them that they're going to have a fire station in Estrella, and we're going to relocate one eighty-one, and that's important to us. We're, it's important that we hire fourteen firefighters, we've got to be ready to man that station when it's brought online. We cannot wait till then to hire these firefighters and train them, and then be up and running. We're hiring additional police officers. Everything, I think, in this budget has been very well thought out, there are a few things in there that I'm not really thrilled about, but I didn't put them in the budget, but that doesn't mean it's not a good thing to do, and I think we've done our due diligence, and I will be supporting this budget.
You have a comment?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, thank you to the team as well, thank you to answering my questions offline, individually as well. So, yeah, I mean, to the people's points and the questions that I had were about how we go about hiring and what justification is, and things like that, I know we brought on, looking at the two, two new officers, which is, which is fine, but I didn't see any facts from, from us to, to back that up, but that's just one example, I'm always leery to, so I make sure that we, that we hire somebody that we, we truly need them, and that they're gonna be utilized appropriately, and that, that we're using the cities, the citizens' resources to the best abilities, so. And then also, I also brought up about the, I think it was last, the last meeting, just about the debt as well, and how I'd like to see us start paying some money towards, whatever way we decide to do it, but some money towards our debt, so I'd like to see us keep growing and growing our debt, I'd like to see that reduced in the future, and maybe that means we don't do something, but just to make sure that we're conservative in our, our debt position as well. And, yeah, I mean, I think there are a lot of great things in the budget, infrastructure-wise especially, that we need as we're growing the city, that also goes along with people, people that are gonna man those new facilities, and also increase our, our, our life, our livelihood in the cities as well. So, so I appreciate everybody's thoughts on the budget here as well, but, yeah, so I'm looking forward to discussions on the budget, on the, the debt in the future, I know the CIP, and then also with tax counts, so, thank you.
I also appreciate what the staff has done. I feel like somehow we've let you down, because each of these things that were questioned tonight, opportunity was there for council to express their feelings. The other thing council could have done, they could have turned down some of the hires. There were things that were presented to us, and completely presented to us, the facts were there, they voted on it, and so to come back at this stage is irresponsible for our council, and I'll have to take that responsibility of the mayor, because I lead this group, but I think it's irresponsible, because many of these subject matters should have been brought up to the point where we're all give and take and, you know, and, and understand where, but tonight, to do it at this point, I'm disappointed, and I'm more disappointed in my leadership for this to happen tonight, but I thank the, the departments for their hard work, the city manager for you coming in and doing what you've had to do, some of the subject matters they talked about tonight on the financing, other cities do. It wasn't like we picked this out of the sky, other cities have been doing that on ongoing, so it isn't any great surprise, it isn't anything, and the other thing that you continually forget is this is a tax state. They built it on sales tax. We don't have the property tax value that the other states do, all over, the amount of money they bring in for that is, is incredible, we don't have that. We even have the part where they lowered five percent, now, so now we're even got another umbrella over us, took some more revenue away from us. So, that's, all comes in to doing a budget, and I respect that my council's brave enough to give their opinions, but then I'm a mayor that's brave enough to tell you how it's affected me, and it really has tonight. So, I only say, council, as we go on to this next year, please, when you're at a council meeting, be sure you've read everything, be sure you've talked to the staff, and be sure you say your opinion on the dais. Let's not make this political, let's say what you want each time, so that when we come to this time, then we have this consensus, and not that we're, at the end, we're all gonna agree with anything, we aren't, but at least we will have all that. So, again, thank you very much, Lori, you have a tough job, and so does staff on this, and I greatly appreciate it. So, let's vote on this, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Nay.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Passes four to.
All right, now we're at the end. Does council have any comments or combination reports you'd like to make tonight? Yes, Councilman Stipp?
Valley Metro was last week, trying to figure out a way to get, based on the work session that we had two weeks ago, to get you guy, guys collective, the information from those meetings. So, I talked with John today about trying to figure out how to get you the minutes or whatever to keep up on what's happening with Valley Metro. The meeting was very brief, but we had, they are getting ready to embark on a, looking at the new system for tickets, to go to the smart card and that kind of thing. The surprising thing that came out of that was, was two things, number one was, the current system they have is a proprietary system owned by a company that designed it like in two thousand and six or something, so it is very old technology, it cannot be updated unless the company does it, so they're kind of a, they're really beholden to that company, and they want to get out of that. The other thing that was very, very interesting from that is it will take until they estimate twenty twenty-two before that comes online, and most of the board was pretty, I don't want to go as far as appalled, but they were pretty shocked by that length of time, and were hoping that we'd move it forward, so there'll be more coming on that, but that was the big item out of the agenda, but I thought based on our conversation with the Valley Metro staff the week before, that it was kind of important that we maybe keep up on some of that, so we'll be looking for that in the council updates as we get on.
I appreciate that information, thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I want to throw a shout-out, Lyman in your group there at HR, I've got some family challenges in the outing future, and Jeannie's been very helpful with me, sitting down with the health insurance plan, and helping me go through there and pick what I need to get, in fact, I'm gonna sit down with her Wednesday to add, you know, and family to that, so, again, I want to thank you and your staff for taking the time to help me walk through there, because they've been very, very helpful, so, thank you.
Molly?
I have, I have something for the city manager when it comes time, but right now, don't.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, last week, we went to the West Side Impact Teacher of the Year Awards Breakfast, which was a good, a good event, to highlight some of our, our good teachers from our good, Goodyear schools, and the Army Recruitment Center, that was a, great to see another facility that the young people can go, or anybody can go and sign up for the military, so that was good to welcome them to the community as well. And then, I think that was most of what I wanted to talk about, then there's something else, but I can't remember now, so, that's about it, thank you.
Well, you were it. I'm with you all together.
I know we are, I just was highlighting it, highlighting what we did.
You were at a lot of events this week.
We were at lots of things, I'm just, just wanted to bring it up, Today Flight, that was great too.
Yeah, we, we had some good...
Yeah, so it was good, thank you.
Joanne, anything? It's your last chance.
Sign off.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does the city manager have any to report?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to highlight a couple of items, it's graduation season, and we had a number of graduations that took place at the Goodyear Ballpark, Buckeye Union, Yonkers, and Estrella foothills high schools hosted their graduations on Thursday and Friday. We had nine hundred and fifty graduates walk across the stage, supported by more than twelve thousand family members, friends, and guests who were in attendance. All of the graduations ran smoothly, of course, with no major incidents, and then I also wanted to mention that city offices are closed in observance of Memorial Day on Monday. Of course, emergency fire and police services will operate as normal and will not be affected by the closure, city offices will reopen at eight AM on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, there will be no trash recycling or bulk refuse service on the holiday, the services will resume the day after the holiday on a modified schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you have any inquiries of staff tonight? Councilman Stipp?
Okay, I'm not sure where this belongs, and I was caught, I don't want to say off-guard, but last year at the League, Ann Donahue, council member from Litchfield Park...
Yeah, I know her well.
Yep, we, I mean, we all do, but we bumped into one another during the Parade of Cities, and she said, you know what would be great, if we got together and did one of these, and I said, boy, it sure would be, and then I went on my way and forgot all about it. Well, the, late last week, she hit me with an email, hey, I'm getting ready to put a committee together to do this thing, I said, I haven't talked to anybody yet, so I guess, generally, I'm asking the council, I asked the mayor, I'm not really sure how, or the manager, how this thing, how we do this, if it's something that we want to explore, doing a joint booth with Litchfield Park? At the League, the, the, much more, Parade of Cities, the thing that they call it, but...
Yeah, I know what, I know, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the expressions.
Yeah, yeah, the trinkets thing, but Ann has got someone from the Litchfield Park Historical Society on board, she's got Sarah Cheever on board, she wanted to know if we would have somebody, I said, I wasn't sure if I was even gonna be at the League this year, but I would check, so here's, I'm checking, so I'm not sure...
Let's just put it out to the city manager.
I don't know that it's a future agenda item, or what, but...
Thank you, I would propose...
One minute for, yes, Molly, go ahead.
I just wanted to share, last year and the year before, I asked our previous city manager if we could not have a city booth, because I was there one of the years representing the National League of Cities, and I had my own booth to try to get other cities to join NLC, and I was really disappointed that my city did not have a booth, or it, oh, actually, it's a table, it was, you know, it's really nice, so I'm hoping that you'll be able to figure out how we can do it, it just needs to be manned, and we, you have to have a lot of goodies to pass out, let's say Goodyear.
We can always use the council money. Heck, yeah.
And thank you, what I'll do is I'll work with Rob in our office, and we've already been talking about having a booth at that conference, and so I think the question is whether we will partner with Litchfield Parks, so we'll take that on, ask staff, have that conversation, and, and let council know our options, and perhaps a Friday manager's report.
And so, out of this conversation tonight, do we have future agenda items?
Oh, I have something for the city manager.
All right, go ahead.
If I might, in your city manager report you sent out about the LED street light project, I drove it last night to Sadea, I was surprised that we picked a brand-new subdivision, I was disappointed that North subdivision did not get an LED light to see if that would help with their security, the LED light looks good, but it doesn't necessarily give out any more light to lighten up the neighborhood, it's just a bright light, and it's very, what do you call it, Bill, how it's... Very directional, thank you very much, it's very directional, and, but I, we drove, I drove all of the collector's streets with my husband, then into the residential area, and so, that's all I know, I don't know that they changed, I'm assuming we chose the brand-new subdivision because they had newer light fixtures, that was my take on it, but, anyway, so it's, and I'd like to know if there's any other subdivision we plan on doing a pilot with, and if so, could we do it in the older subdivisions, who, who really have been complaining that they don't have enough light for their safety.
Did you get all that, Julie?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just getting direction on how much I can share at this moment in time, so what I'll do is, this is a pilot program, and so, of course, we're very interested in council's, you know, comments and feel for this pilot project, but also the community, and what I'll do is, I don't have a direct answer as to how those communities were selected, and if any other communities will be participating in the pilot, so I'll be bringing that information back also in a Friday manager memo, if that's okay.
Thank you, thank you. Well, the next meeting will be a CFD, four forty-five on June eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and immediately following, we'll have a work session, a regular meeting, and a special meeting, and I'm about ready to adjourn this, but I wish you the best, we'll be looking forward to the result, all right? Oh, I want to say one more, Sue, stand up there, this is Sue's really last meeting, she's gonna be gone the la, I, I should have done that at the beginning, Sue, but we want to, no, no, stand up there, you have to do with the rest of us. I really appreciate how good you've taken care of us over the years you've worked for the city, and being in the clerk's office, I've just had many engagements and conversation with you and help, and we've all come after you for paperwork, because we have to go to the city clerk for the financing, for, for working on our campaigns, and you name it, plus the city council, and so you work hard, and we really appreciate it, and we just wish you the best in your retirement. I'd like to give a hand of applause for you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say something, you have the floor to say it.
Just thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity that I've had, working for the city of Goodyear for ten years, ten and a half years, it's been a great experience, thank you.
Well, have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.